Good evening. Welcome to the January 13th, 2022, meeting of the Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, and the Union 50 Superintendency Committee. My name is Nancy Cordell, and I call this meeting to order at 6:34 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with the Act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and please be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Tonight, we are deliberating the important matter of hiring a superintendent. First on our agenda this evening is community comments. Before I read the preamble, is anyone present who would like to make a community comment this evening? Please raise your virtual hand if so.
Nancy?
Yes.
Not me, but Tracy's having trouble getting... Oh, there you are.
I'm here. Sorry, I was in the seven o'clock call, not the 6:30. Sorry about that, everyone.
Okay, great.
Okay, so my question is, is there any community members that will be making a comment during community comments? And if anyone sees a hand raised, please let me know.
I'm not seeing any, Nancy.
Okay, all right. All right, I am closing community comments. Okay, all right, so before we begin deliberations, I would like to invite Judy Miller, co-chair of our superintendent search team, to share an overview of the search process today.
First, before I say anything like, "Thanks, Nancy," I need to unmute myself. Before anything, I want to express my gratitude to Colleen Burke, who has been my co-chair, colleague, partner, emotional support, really smart person, and fabulous, fabulous human being, who I've worked with for four months on this, and I want to applaud for Colleen. She's my rock. I also want to thank the other two members from the school committee who were on the superintendent search team, Nancy Cordell and Tracy Mannion. It was their... They had invaluable contributions to this process. When we renewed our superintendent search this fall, we began by returning to the candid profile developed last year with extensive community input regarding the role of the superintendent and the needs of our district. The three school committees met on October 19th to refine that profile for our current search. Equipped with the candidate profile, the search team's next task was to assemble a screening committee to review applications and screen the candidates. The 16-member screening committee was made up of representatives of each of the stakeholder groups at DS, four from administration/leadership team, four educators, four parents, and four school committee members, who I already mentioned. Despite its size, the screening committee functioned collaboratively and efficiently, and we want to again thank the members of that team. From the administrators, Anne Dever Keegan, Kate McCarthy, Barbara Brown, and Monique Marshall-Veale, parents Fiona Hugh, Jennifer Deben, Anne Marie Barrows-Miller, and Lori Crissell, educators Laney Glenn, Carrie Dartompre, Heidi Luondo, and Carly Eccles. Over a period of three weeks this November, the screening committee met on several occasions to review the applications submitted for the position and to interview selected candidates. Following the preliminary interviews and after much in-depth discussion and consideration, the screening committee during its November 22nd meeting voted to recommend candidates for further consideration by Union 50, the region, and the school committees. At our joint school committee meeting on December 7th, 2021, the screening committee presented a slate of three individuals, Gerardo Martinez, Joseph Maruzak, and Elizabeth McCoy, for further consideration. Union 50, the region, and our full committees voted to accept this slate of candidates. Last week, we were fortunate to have each of these candidates spend a day visiting the district and meeting with our building leaders and our leadership team. In addition, each candidate attended three forums, one for students, one for educators, and one for parents, during which our students, educators, and parents were able to ask the candidates their questions and then provide us with feedback. We wish to thank the many, many members of our community who took the time to participate in these forums and offer their views regarding the candidates. Your feedback was compiled and provided to the members of the school committees for their review. In addition, school committee members have conducted reference checks regarding each candidate, and we wish to thank those members who contributed to that important process. Before we begin our deliberations, I would like to review the structure of our committees vis-à-vis hiring a superintendent, both for our members, both for the members of our committees, who are new to this process, and for the members of the public who may be joining us tonight. When our districts regionalized, we created a body called the Union 50 Superintendency Committee for the purpose of allowing the two local elementary school districts to hire a shared superintendent. Union 50 is made up of three members each, from the Dover School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee. This year, those members are Colleen Burke, Sarah Gutierrez Dunn, and Mark Healy from Dover, and Amanda Brown, Nancy Cordell, and Dennis Quant from Sherburne. Both Union 50 and the region have the authority to appoint a superintendent independently, and each will conduct a vote tonight. Our past practice has been for Union 50, that is, the Dover and Sherburne districts, and the region to share a superintendent. In order for a motion to begin contract negotiations with a new superintendent to pass, it must receive a majority of votes in the Union 50 Superintendency Committee and a majority of the votes in the region. Following the votes by Union 50 and the region, we will also take a symbolic vote from the remaining members of the Dover and Sherburne committees so that all voices can be heard. So, does anyone on any committee members have any questions about Union 50 or the hiring process? I want to make sure everyone's clear about that before we move forward with our deliberations. Okay. Nancy, I'm gonna hand it back to you.
All right, thanks so much, Judy. Now, we will begin the important work of deliberating. I think it'd be great if, when a member wants to have something to say, they could either raise their virtual hand or do this and wait to be recognized by the chair. We ask that members please be mindful to keep their comments regarding the candidates respectful and constructive. If it seems that there is emerging consensus around a candidate, the chair will ask for a motion to nominate the candidate and to authorize a subcommittee to enter into contract negotiations with the candidate to become the next superintendent of the Dover Sherburne Public Schools. A vote will be taken by Union 50 and then turned over to the region. Following that vote, a vote will be taken by each local school committee, as Judy had mentioned. Should we select a candidate this evening, we will also take a vote by Union 50 and the region to appoint representatives to conduct contract negotiations. We will then vote by each committee to enter into an executive session for the purpose of conducting a negotiation strategy session. Do committee members have questions about the process before we begin deliberation? All right, so let's begin. Who would like to start and speak on behalf of the candidate you would like to see as our new superintendent? Who do you want to hire? Amanda?
Thanks, Nancy. Yeah, I'm happy to start. I spent a lot of time considering this decision, and I've written down some thoughts in preparation for tonight, and I'd like to just read them so that I don't miss anything. So, here I go. Before I begin, I want to thank the search committee for their work to bring us to this point and to Judy, Nancy, and Colleen for leading the work this week. Thank you to everyone in the community who took the time to attend meetings and share feedback along the way. Your input was invaluable, as I considered the decision before us tonight. Thank you too to the candidates for their time and their commitment to educating children throughout their careers. We were really lucky to have three strong candidates to consider tonight. I want to speak tonight on behalf of Beth McCoy. I have been fortunate to work closely with Beth as a representative of the Sherburne School Committee on her academic innovation team, the Teaching and Learning Subcommittee during the summer of 2020, and the Educator Evaluation MOU. As a parent, I have felt gratitude for her empathy as she has listened and helped guide me when my own children have struggled. Beth radiates joy and passion for teaching, learning, and children. Her unique combination of grace and grit, tenacity and compassion, sharp intellect, and her coherent vision for whole-child education makes her the ideal candidate for our next superintendent. Beth has the soul of an educator. She sparks enthusiasm, creativity, and passion in others. My work with her as part of the academic innovation team was one of the best professional development experiences I have had in over 20 years of teaching. A Beth-led initiative is organized, inclusive, and intellectually stimulating. She is talented at bringing people together and facilitating consensus building. She pushes people's thinking and ensures that we always keep kids at the heart of our work. She models the curiosity and growth mindset we want for our educators and students. Even the process by which she talked about her decision to apply to the superintendent job demonstrated her thirst for knowledge, her thoughtfulness, and her tremendous capacity for reflection. As a leader, Beth is visionary. Throughout her interview, she returned again and again to what's best for kids. Her experience as an educator and administrator reveals that this has been a lifelong priority. She has experience in special education and has been invested throughout her career in working toward equity. As the co-chair of DS-Aid, she's continued to move the district toward our ideals of anti-racism, inclusion, diversity, and equity, and to give every child a sense of belonging. Kids cannot learn unless they feel safe and held. She understands that social-emotional learning and DEI work are not separate initiatives, but go hand in hand. And she believes in challenging the status quo when it isn't serving kids, as evidenced by her work at Boston Latin on maintaining meaningful rigor and ensuring kids get enough sleep. Her commitment to challenge and expand definitions of success when warranted to protect the health and well-being of children has continued at DS. In a high-achieving district, it's easy to become complacent and rest on a tradition of excellence. Beth sees that we are in a position from which we can lead innovation and model what school can be. We are already on the road to better serve all of our students. With Beth, we would gain a rare combination of both continuity and progress toward change. While many of those in the community who gave us feedback acknowledged that any of the three candidates would meet the needs of our district at this time, no other candidate garnered the passionate enthusiasm that Beth did across stakeholder groups. Educators and administrative leaders have shown particular passion and respect for Beth as their leader throughout her tenure at DS, and especially this week. At this challenging moment in education, having a new superintendent that educators already know and trust because they've worked with her through a crisis is a huge asset for our community. Their good work can continue uninterrupted, and Beth can hit the ground running. In fact, knowing Beth, she just won't stop running at all. I had an insider's view of Beth's leadership as the district faced the challenge of the pandemic. Her work ethic is unparalleled. She dove in headfirst, learning alongside educators and students, reimagining school as she led it. This work alone showcases the key skills and competencies we set out in our candidate profile: collaborative leadership, exemplary communication, and a commitment to systemic equity and to whole-child education. Beth has proven that she has what it takes to effectively lead DS through anything. What most struck me in her interview on Tuesday night was the strength and coherence of her vision and her love for and commitment to the Dover Sherburne Public Schools. As a teacher, I want to work for her. As a parent, I want her vision for my children. And as a school committee member, I enthusiastically endorse her this evening as the best choice we can make for Dover Sherburne's next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Who is the next person that'd like to speak on behalf of their candidate? Okay, Kate, and then Lynn?
Thanks, Nancy. Amanda, that's a tough act to follow. Thank you for those words. I did prepare some as well. And to echo your thoughts, deep, deep gratitude to Judy, Colleen, and the search committee. We have gotten to this fabulous place because of your enormous amount of time, effort, thoroughness, and thoughtfulness to all of these issues. I think we were so lucky to have three fantastic candidates who have deep experience and a clear dedication to students and to teaching. And I also enjoyed spending time and meeting too, but spending time with all three. In rereading our candidate profile, I felt that Beth McCoy really hit on all of the marks that we set out. Between her initial years in teaching, to her leadership experience at the Boston Latin School, and now Dover Sherburne, Beth has demonstrated her ability to lead collaboratively and creatively. Her work on Portrait of a Graduate, DS-Aid, and then Planning Professional Development for her staff are just a few examples of her shining work with teachers and students. As I read through the community and educator feedback forms, I couldn't help but notice words and phrases that repeatedly stuck out to me. Some of them were "present," "thoughtful listener," "compassionate leader," "collaborative," "always has a lens of equity, diversity, and inclusion," "committed to the district," "loves the community," and "led us through the pandemic and helped us to celebrate the silver linings." I have had the pleasure of knowing Beth as a community member for eight years and have now worked alongside her as a school committee member for almost five. I have every confidence that Beth is ready for this next step and will lead Dover Sherburne with head and with heart. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Lynn?
I was just gonna say what they said. Yeah, I didn't prepare remarks, so I'll just riff. But, you know, as I was evaluating all of the candidates, they're all amazing candidates, and I'm so impressed with the search team, screening committee, everyone, for accomplishing this in such a period of chaos and pressure. And, you know, I'm just so impressed. I'm so grateful. And I too, as, you know, I evaluated all of these candidates. You know, my first wish is, if we could hire them all, they all bring so much to the table. You know, but in the end, you know, I feel like the key things we need right now, you know, are our vision, stability, experience, and a commitment to DEI and recognizing that each of those letters represent different things. And Beth does that. And, you know, so yeah, what you guys said.
Thanks, Lynn. Colleen, was that your hand up? Were we itching your face? No. Maggie?
Thank you, Nancy. I also prepared remarks. I'm deeply grateful to have been part of the process this year, led by our steadfast colleagues Judy Miller and Colleen Burke, whose work just... I'm overwhelmed. It was organized. It was well-communicated to both the committees and to the community. I'm deeply grateful to the screening committees and their success in finding us three exemplary candidates for our consideration. If there were three executive positions available here in our community, I'd advocate that we hire them all. But unfortunately, there's only one, and for me, the choice is difficult and yet perfectly clear. The speakers earlier this evening have already mentioned many specific observations that I also share. In the five years that she served our community, I have worked with Beth McCoy on the Academic Innovation Team and the Evaluation Task Force, and in many, many ad hoc ways, when I chaired the committee through the pandemic last year. Through all the ups and during the most intense downs, Beth McCoy is the absolute model of professional excellence and absolutely the person who should be the next leader of our school districts, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Tracy?
Yes, hi, everybody. Mine will be very short and sweet. My choice is also Beth McCoy. Beth has invested her time into our children, our community. Her experience in the renowned Boston Latin School, in addition to her superlative educational background, add to her value for our community. One thing I will say about Beth is, what I've noticed about her personally is that she listens and she reacts. As busy as she is, she replies to parental requests quickly and professionally, and to me, that's very important. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf? Judy?
I'm only able to write one speech in a day, so I did not prepare remarks. I want to say that Beth is one of the smartest people I've ever met. She is... Has an incredible soul. But one of the things that I treasure the most about Beth and why I think she'll be an excellent leader is that if you criticize Beth, she has the ability, unlike me, unlike a lot of people, she has the ability to change, and she has the ability to listen to criticism and say, "Hmm, this is what I do well. Maybe I can learn from that." She is the definition of a lifelong learner. I think I can... I don't want to repeat because, you know, everyone was so eloquent in their remarks, but I want to say that I wholeheartedly support Beth to be our next superintendent.
Thanks. Thanks, Judy. Anyone from the... Mark?
Hi, thank you. Could... I also don't have a written prepared speech, but a few thoughts. And I know that we were lucky, blessed, to have so many good applicants to interview. And I think Gerardo brought so much to the table, just for us to think about and capture here. I am very pleased and overwhelmed with joy to hear so much support for Beth, and I think it's well-deserved support. But I also want to recognize the tough competition she had and the excellent, thought-provoking value that Gerardo added to us. And I would use that for Beth to say, as Amanda pointed out, you have such support among all the stakeholder groups, and we are, it sounds like, very excited to see you succeed here and to push some boundaries and become, I'll say, Beth 3.0, because you had talked about doing school as a younger student and then learning past your 30s, thinking, "We can do this better. We can do it differently." And that's the career experience you've had so far. I would look forward to recognizing this vast amount of support you have from us and from the community to think about how we could do things in really innovative, deep, meaningful ways, and thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Sarah? And Liz? Liz, did you raise your hand as well?
Liz was first, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I did say... Sorry, Liz, and then Sarah.
No worries. I echo everything that has been said, both in thanks to all the people who did all the work to make this happen, but also in what everyone is saying about Beth. I just wanted to add one tidbit, that I found it extremely moving how passionate the staff and community was about her, that to not listen would be wrong. I just, I hope someday she gets to see that, because it was extremely moving to me.
Thanks, Liz. Sarah?
I could not agree more with all of the comments that have been made, and I don't want to be repetitive, so I'm gonna try to trim what I had prepared, but if you'll bear with me. I do want to express my gratitude to each of the candidates for the time that they invested in this process, in visiting with us and our community of students, parents, teachers, administrators, and staff, and for the candidate's willingness to bring their considerable talents to bear at DS. I also want to thank the screening committee for bringing three excellent candidates before us, all of whom bring not only strong qualifications on paper, but also demonstrated poise, dedication, care, and thoughtfulness in our meetings with them. We are fortunate indeed to have such choices. Most of all, I am struck by the broad base of support that Beth McCoy has earned across all stakeholder groups at DS. We heard from parents, students, teachers, and administrators alike who advocated for Beth as the best choice to become our next superintendent. Beth is a collaborative leader, a consensus builder, and empathetic listener. She has earned the confidence and respect of our community. As one example, I think back to the opening day presentation that Beth delivered this year to teachers and staff. I was fortunate to be present along with the other school committee chairs for that meeting. Beth spoke of the silver linings of the pandemic, and it's not an exaggeration to say that there were both laughter and tears in the room. And it was evident to me that this is a leader who not only understands, but inspires. Through her leadership of DS-Aid and championing the equity audit, Beth has demonstrated a commitment to examining our district's practices to ensure that every student has equitable access to the resources and supports that they need to succeed. Her philosophy of education and her work on Portrait of a Graduate exemplifies the whole-child approach to education, one that maintains focus on academic rigor, hand in hand with social and emotional well-being, innovative teaching and learning, rather than rote memorization and recitation. During this moment in time, there is heightened value in already having forged strong relationships and earned the trust of our community and its stakeholders, and in having established a track record of not only sharing, but acting on the values we hold dear in our school districts. And for all of these reasons, I do believe that Beth McCoy is the right choice for our next superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any other committee members that want to share?
I'll go next, then. I did prepare a little something, but I can't... I think everyone said it best. I do want to say gratitude to Judy and Colleen and the search committee, that it was... Everything was just well-oiled machine, and it really... You guys really led us to get where we are today. The candidates, I thought, were, you know, Beth had tough competition. They were all engaged. They all came prepared. Every, you know, they all wanted the job. You could feel they all, you know, everyone wanted to be our superintendent. But I agree that from me working on Beth with committees, from what she demonstrated and some of the things I didn't know she did, and with the overwhelming support of the community, I, you know, there is no, you know, she is the clear choice for me to be our next superintendent. And with the overwhelming support of the community, I, I, you know, there is no, you know, she is the clear choice for me to be our next superintendent. And if no one else has. Any other comments? And you don't have to make a comment, so don't feel pressure if you, if you, you know, don't want to say anything. I think that we might, oh Dennis? Sorry, I didn't.
I have, I have nothing to say on the candidates. It wouldn't be duplicative, but I did want to sort of highlight that the committee did a really good job, I think orchestrating this process to ensure that it was fair for everybody. And we also were able to gather input from all of the various stakeholders, both within our community and our schools and outside of the community. So I just want to acknowledge that because I think that that was incredibly important and I don't think we went with the process that we originally thought. And I think we, we gave it, it's, it's time to make sure that we, we thought about the way to get the best information possible. So, thank you.
Thanks Dennis. And I, I actually do want to just mention one other thing. I think the other chairs and just some of the other committee members with deep experience, I think. We, you know, all, you know, helped and supported to try to get where we are today in terms of the process. So I thank everyone. For their, for their expertise. So I think we can, oh Kate, oh, does someone have? Angie? Oh Angie, I'm sorry, I'm.
Sometimes we get us, they get us confused. I just wanted, I wanted to thank the committee and I especially wanted to thank them for. How flexible they had to be with how things changed so quickly. And I think that we got the best out of it and I have to say that I went back and rewatched all of the interviews again today, so it's fresh in my mind. And I have to say one thing, like they all said. All the candidates had so much to bring and they were all innovative and some things I'd never thought of and there was so much I learned. I, I do think for our district, Beth is our clear choice. I also did not realize that Beth had reached out to our district while she was at Boston Latin to try to get some implementation there to help her kids. And so I just feel like she's always thought outside the box and she continues to do so in our district. And that was highlighted by a lot of the responses that I read from the community about her innovation. And she's always trying to think of new ways and better ways to do things for our community.
Thanks Angie, I hope your voice gets better too. Okay, looking. Alright, so I think we can start this, the next part of the process and, you know, thumbs up that I hopefully I get it right, you know, go through the, the next steps here, but. I think that we, we have an overwhelming consensus. Okay, so I will start by saying. Do I have a motion from a member of the Union 50 Superintendency Committee to offer the position of Superintendent of the Dover Sherburne Public Schools? To Beth McCoy and authorize entering into contract negotiations regarding the same?
So moved.
Any discussion? Oh, do I have a second? Do I have a second? Sorry, yes, do I have a second? Second Sarah, any discussion? Okay, so now we'll poll members and I will turn it over to Kate as the chair for the regional school committee. So I poll.
Do I? Union 50 votes.
Okay.
Union 50 should vote and then the region votes.
Should Union 50 vote by Sherburne and then by Dover or just as one?
As one.
Just one?
The six members of Union 50 vote and then Kate has the region vote. And then we go back and we, and we get a vote from Sherburne and from Dover. Because we are respectful of all our members.
Okay, alright. So then I will take a, a, a poll vote, so I hope I get this right. Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez done, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
And Colleen? No, it's not, is it Colleen? Yes.
Colleen Burt, yes.
Okay, and Nancy Cordell, yes. Kate, over to you.
Do I have a motion from a member of the regional school committee? To offer the position of Superintendent of the Dover Sherburne Public Schools to Beth McCoy. And to authorize entering into contract negotiations regarding the same. Maggie Sharon, so moved. Thanks Maggie.
Call it second?
Second Lynn, thank you. Any further discussion? Nope, hearing none, I will take a roll call. Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes, with pleasure.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Now I will poll. The members of, or I'll have Sarah poll the members of the Dover School Committee.
Alright, I'm not sure we need a motion here since this is a symbolic vote. Does everybody agree with that? Alright, so we'll go ahead and poll the members of the Dover School Committee. Starting with Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Jeff Cassidy?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez done, yes.
Okay, and I'd like to poll the Sherburne School Committee. David Cases?
David Cases, yes.
Gita?
Gita Russo, yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And where's Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. Okay. Having voted to offer the superintendent position to Beth McCoy and enter into contract negotiations. We now need to make motions to appoint a subcommittee to conduct those negotiations. Okay, so. To Union 50 members, do I have a motion to appoint two Union 50 representatives along with two regional school committee representatives to negotiate a contract? With Beth McCoy on behalf of the school committees based on the terms determined during our strategy session?
I am so sorry Nancy, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I. Are you planning to appoint people right now? I, I thought. I'm surprised.
That's how we do it. Because usually you have like your negotiations people on your thing Judy.
Okay, well.
Sorry.
We haven't always done it that way, but.
No, sorry. Judy, this is the process we followed for Kathy. So it's the most recent.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm surprised because I talked to Kate about it and I was under the impression that we weren't doing it that way tonight, but that's okay.
Okay, so Judy, okay, I'm going to proceed.
And I think some of this we can discuss further in executive session, yes.
Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion to appoint two Union 50 representatives along with two regional school committee representatives to negotiate a contract? With Beth McCoy on behalf of the school committees based on the terms determined during our strategy session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Colleen Burt? Second?
Alright, any discussion? Nope, okay. Alright, Colleen, I'm going to poll the members. Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Sarah?
Sarah Gutierrez done, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. Alright Kate? Over to you, to the, for the region. Yep.
Thanks. Do I have a motion to appoint two regional school committee representatives and two Union 50 representatives to negotiate a contract? With Beth McCoy on behalf of the school committee based on the terms determined during our strategy session?
Judy Miller, so moved.
Judy. Colin, second.
Lynn, second, thank you. Any further discussion? Nope, okay. Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes.
Alright, great. Alright, so now we will poll to enter executive session, not to return to open session. I'll start with Sherburne. Do I have a motion to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions? In preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, not to reconvene in open session?
Dennis Quan, so moved.
Do I have a second?
I can, Amanda Brown, second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, David?
Yep, David Cases, yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Gita?
Gita Russo, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, yes.
And Nancy Cordell, yes. Over to you, Sarah.
Alright. Do I have a motion from the Dover School Committee to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions? In preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, not to reconvene in open session?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Second?
Jeff Cassidy, second.
Any discussion? Alright, we'll take a roll call vote. Mark?
Mark Healy, yes.
Colleen?
Colleen Burt, yes.
Liz?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Jeff?
Jeff Cassidy, yes.
And Sarah Gutierrez done, yes. Kate?
Okay. From the regional school committee, do I have a motion to enter executive session to conduct strategy sessions? In preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, not to reconvene in open session?
Lynn Collins, so moved.
Tracy. Sorry. No Judy, take it.
Judy Miller, second.
Okay, thank you everyone. Any further discussion? Nope, okay, I will roll call one more time. Angie Johnson?
Angie Johnson, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie Sharon?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Tracy Mannion?
Tracy Mannion, yes.
And Kate Potter, yes.
Okay, great. So thank you everyone.